Okay, we're ready. Okay, welcome to the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners Work Session July 27, 2022. We've got a lot of stuff on the work session, so we're going to get right to it. A lot of information we had to get around today. So we will start with the Child Care Fund. Okay, Colleen. You can bring all your people up. Okay, bring Kat. Bring Dawn up, and then you've got a new lady here.
Yeah, so I'm Jake Laney. For those who don't know me, I'm Juvenile Director at this point. The next me is Ms. LaCass, who probably all. It says the screen.
Yep, push the button. There you go.
The screen, we're good.
Good.
And then Keely D'Arso is joining us today as well. She's the one in our office.
Keely D'Arso?
Yes. She's the one in our office that does the day-to-day, most of the day-to-day with the Budget, Child Care Fund, and things like that, too. So I thought it was important to bring her down today as well. So basically, for us.
Jake, before you get started.
Yes.
As far as commissioners, you're going to teach us something about childcare, right?
Yes, hopefully.
Okay, because Mark and I go to Northern Michigan Commissioners Meetings, and it's thirty-four counties in Northern Michigan, and a lot of us don't know what childcare really does, other than it costs us a lot of money.
It certainly does.
Jody.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, all right. So I want to start briefly, just with kind of an overview of where we're at in juvenile justice in the state of Michigan. Right now, we are at certainly a crisis when it comes to residential placements in the state of Michigan. There are only two now state-funded secure placements for juveniles in the entire state. There's Shawano in Grayling, and then there's Bay Pines in Escanaba. Detroit Behavioral Institute just shut down on July 8th. All of their children have been redistributed to both of those secure placements. So we are seeing a crisis right now for residential as far as placement of juveniles. Because of that, basic economic principles, supply and demand, their costs have been skyrocketing as well. So with our budget, how we're looking at it is, luckily, we have been able to keep our placement costs exactly the same as they were from last year. How we're doing that is we are keeping more kids in our community. And that is the impetus from the state at this point, to try to keep juveniles in the community, just because costs of residential care are skyrocketing, and there's no placement. So we have to figure out what to do with these kids when there's no way we can put them in secure placement. We have been very aggressive in onboarding more service providers for this year. And the cost on those, our budgeted cost on those, we've only raised that by $5,000 for this fiscal year. We have onboarded a online kind of class that has a bunch of substance abuse classes, domestic violence classes. That online program is very thorough in that it has anti, I guess, anti-skipping mechanisms in it. They put secret embedded messages into the slides. And once they get through a certain amount of slides, they have to answer the question that they did the embedded word in. And if the child can't get it, they have to go back and repeat it. So we've got really good feedback on that. We've insta- or onboarded Thrive Therapy and Wellness out of Hilton Lake. One of our big barriers this year was transportation for youth, being that our main service provider is Bridges, right here in town. And they, at the time, were not offering much of a online element. So Thrive is in Hilton Lake, so we were able to kind of divide the community with that. If they were, it was easier for them to go to Hilton Lake or go to Roscommon. We had service providers in both areas. In addition to that, we have recently onboarded Maxwell Therapy, which is equine therapy, which is something brand-new for us, trying to introduce animal care. Many of our youth, no matter how disruptive they may be, if they get around animals, all of a sudden, they just completely turn into a different kid. It teaches them responsibility. And that is a very cost-efficient way for us to work things out as well. I'm going to be very aggressive during the next fiscal year for onboarding as many out of, I guess, local community resources as we can. And that's kind of where we're at. We have an impetus from the state to push to keep kids in the community. It is a little difficult because the offenses that we're seeing in the juvenile level are some of the most severe offenses that we've seen. And not having secure placement for these juveniles certainly creates some sort of, not issue necessarily, but a little bit of a, I don't know what I'm trying to say, a little bit of, yeah, more work, a little bit counterintuitive. The JPOs now, instead of a lot of these secure kids that we would put in secure placements, are now having to work around these relationships in the community with their parents that might not understand the complex issues their children face. So we are trying to figure that out the best we can. I think we're doing a pretty good job so far. Most of the increases in the budget, outside of the $5,000 increase, are just wages and fringes. They weren't happening anyway, just scheduled raises. Insurance, things like that. And as far as services goes, we are not budgeting anything else or anything more for our secure placements, because we think that we can address that by onboarding more services in the community. And then we are looking at being aggressive to adding services in the community and being one of the first ones in the door, because once those fill up, they can't provide services anymore. So that is our plan going forward into next year. As far as some of the wages, they are, the state is going to be looking at the County JCO Grant, which is the Lead Juvenile Court Officer, next year. That's what I've heard from the Referees Association anyway. And that.
We actually got an email that that has been increased significantly, but it will not take effect for this budget.
You're talking about the general, or not the general, the basic grant?
Yes.
I'm talking about the JCO grant.
Oh, yeah, I haven't seen that one yet.
Yes, the JCO grant hasn't been looked at in over thirty years. And that is a, basically, we get a percentage back from that for whatever our lead JCO makes. That has not been looked at at the state level for over thirty years. They're looking at looking into that next year, which will bring our costs down if they implement an increase in that at the state level. And as Ms. Valentino said, we do have an increase in the general fund. That is not slated to go into effect until January.
Basically.
Or, yeah, basically, I'm sorry. At this point, I don't know what services we will be onboarding for the increase in the basic grant. I do have a meeting with the Department of Health Services tomorrow to discuss their YAP program, and if we can bring that into our in-home care program, which is another way to keep kids in the community and not send them into secure residential placement.
Change the secret.
Oh, that was from new from last year?
We did it in the middle of last year.
Okay, and our basic grant, Ms. LaCass just informed me, is we have a school counseling, is what we're doing with the basic grant in both Roscommon and Hilton Lake. Charleston-Heston at this point has not come to the table and wanted to have those services. We provide money to both Roscommon and Hilton Lake to have Bridges of West Michigan go in there and do pre, I guess, pre-adjudicative counseling with youth that they might see, might come into the judicial system at some point, that we were trying to address those kids earlier and make it a more preventative service, so we don't see them at all. Which obviously, and when we're talking about money, would bring the cost down significantly. We can address the traumas better and more completely, then hopefully those traumas are addressed, and we might never have to see them in our court system. This is for kids that are ages early elementary through up to ten years old at this point. Our court jurisdiction is at ten years old at this point. That might be changing in the future. I don't know. There's a lot of scuttlebutt and lancing about raising that, the floor of that age up, and increasing the amount of diversion programs the court has to not have children actually have criminal convictions on their record. So we're doing things on the preventative area, doing things on the local community area, and trying to keep kids in the community as much as we can, based on the lack of secure placements we have at our disposal and their rising costs. That's pretty much all I have.
Bottom line is all sixty-five grand.
This, this childcare fund that Jody just gave me a copy of, is that your proposed budget for next year?
That is, yes.
Okay, but you're the first one ahead of the game. Thank you.
Our budget's due a little bit earlier than others.
That's right. I just noticed that line number two, so as far as cost of the general fund is going to be about $32,000 more.
Yes.
So, yeah, we know that upfront, and then at the bottom, I see that it's about $65,000.
That's correct. And most of that is due to the wages and fringes.
Right, right. I mean, I didn't, I didn't dig into the rest of it, but I just, I just noticed what the general fund was, was going to need. And I noticed, I always go to the total.
Sure.
All right. And then I, you know, that Sunday I did buy a Free Press. Kills me to pay $3.99 for it, but I did. But anyway, the front page I talked about, closing of those centers down there, youth centers down there. But you know, the funny thing about that article, they didn't really talk a lot about childcare and how it affects the whole state, because it affected all of us.
It certainly did.
You know, and you're right. It's a crisis situation. It's gotten to be a point, you know. So we probably need to start bringing this up to our legislators.
Well, yeah, and on top of that, with the Raise the Age that came into effect in October, we are now dealing with seventeen-year-olds on our docket. And what Raise the Age did is basically said, if you have a new offense with a seventeen-year-old, they go to juvenile court. And that was anticipated with their state reimbursement. We track the seventeen-year-olds differently than we do any other kid. But they didn't anticipate there, for the kids that we already have on our caseload, we now have to keep them for an additional year potentially. And if they pick up a new offense after they're seventeen and they're already on our caseload, the state will not allow us to count that for Raise the Age or reimbursement. So if they're already on our caseload, pick up a new offense regardless if they're seventeen or not, we can't count that as a Raise the Age kid.
Right.
So this is another year of expense. And obviously, with juveniles, the older they get typically, the more services they're going to need.
Which is typical of a state. When they brought the seventeen-year-old thing into play, mandated us unpaid mandates again.
Yes.
Is what we're getting, you know, unpaid mandates. Now, we have the, counties got the expense, but we don't get anything back from the state.
Yes.
Okay. Any other Commissioner anything? Ken?
Jake, you or Keely, have any recommendations?
Ken.
Get the other half done that's never done for girls. There is basically no place in the state to place girls.
That's correct. There, Bay Pines is really in Vassar House are really our only two places for girls. Vassar House is a non-secure placement that we use sometimes. Bay Pines, they're only secure placement that we use for girls. The detention center has faced quite a bit this year in that there's not a lot of detention centers that are taking kids outside of their county at this point. We're one of the only ones, if not the only one in the state, that is taking kids that are outside of their county. And because of that, they frequently are getting, not necessarily lied to, but some county JPOs that are getting kids into our detention center are misrepresenting the needs and risks of the kids that they're getting. So our detention center has been sometimes getting bamboozled a little bit by other counties, saying, we'll accept your kid. And then they get the kid, and they're like, this is, they actually lie to us, basically.
I can't handle them. They're worse than me.
Yeah, direct conversation, we're like, we can't, we won't even take any kids from so-and-so county anymore, because we can't trust that the referrals that we're getting are actually what the need is. Because, you know, it's a tough thing. It's based on the crisis that we're in, that these counties are like, this kid needs to be in some sort of placement out of our community. He's not safe in our community. So the JPO is saying, well, I have one detention center, and I need to get that kid in there no matter what. So that is, that is a specific issue with our detention centers that they've had to face this year that I know causes them significant aims, providing services, but is this really the case with this child?
We've had problems with, we can't take these violent offenders. We don't have the capability to handle those. Now, on Dawn's suggestion, on the portion that we built for girls in the past that it didn't work out for us, it was a dormitory style where we had like four beds. But as I recall now, my memory fails me at times, we were having problems with having the girls in the dormitory-type situation. And do you, maybe you think we should look at maybe trying to alter that so that that is not a dormitory style, but maybe even just two, two beds that are separate?
That's a really good question, Commissioner Melvin, and I don't know the answer to that. I know that in my past history is, you know, prosecutor and working directly with Lieutenant Beck. I think that she would probably say that female incarceration is a different, a different animal than males. And I don't know if we're talking about being cost-effective, if females necessarily, if that would, if that would help the situation at all. So I don't mean to pass the buck to kind of back and put her on the spot, but I think that that would be a discussion that she would probably be more appropriate to have than I would, because she is more hands-on in placement and things like that than I am.
Well, we do have an in-county demand for female placements.
We have an in-county demand for placement for any, if I had it my way, our detention would only house our youth. But that's not the way that it goes, and I understand that. But we have situations arising frequently that we need beds, and there's no bed available at all. And so then it's on my JPO to figure out, you know, respite care potentially with a relative, with a friend, as long as parents will approve it, to try to get a situation where we can make sure the juvenile and society are safe. Because we're coming out of this post-COVID era, and these post-COVID traumas we're dealing with in youth are a different kind of animal than traumas that we've dealt with in the past with youth. A lot of these children were made to shelter in place in home environments that were not safe for them for a long period of time. And we, now that the children are back in school, they're disclosing traumas. And these are traumas that are longstanding and haven't been treated in quite some time. So that's kind of the situation that we find ourselves in.
Mr. Melbourne.
Thanks for being here today. I would be open to discussion and further suggestions on how we can increase our effectiveness. So if you want to come back in a month or two, I would, I would welcome that discussion. We have the players here, obviously, that are experts in this arena. We can develop some other programs that might be more effective. I'm open to those suggestions.
Thank you, Commissioner Melbourne. I appreciate that.
Anything else, ma'am, come by the commissioner? Thanks for your report.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Your first time in front of us since Dawn always comes.
I had to move back, right?
Pause retirement, Dawn. No, she's been helping out. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We will need to have that on as an approval item for the next meeting for them, so that they can have that in a timely manner.
For their budget. Their budget. Yep, got you. Okay, item two, proposed changes to the jail food systems. Lieutenant, Lieutenant Beck. Speak of the devil.
Jake is correct. Female housing is much different than male housing, and we can talk about that at a later time.
Okay.
We're here to talk about food. I have Rich and Robin here from Solmate Solutions. I passed out some flyers, or some paperwork about their company. And they're going to do most of speaking, because they know all about their company.
Thank you.
This is something that Commissioner Melbourne likes when you talk about food.
Yes.
Well, first of all, I think commissioners and controller for us take a few minutes, and that tells, tell a little bit about who we are, and about our company. So real briefly, we're Solmate Solutions. Kind of background, I spent twenty-seven years in law enforcement. My last ten years, I ran a jail in Midland County. I was a captain administrator, so I knew Lieutenant Beck's world very well. Once I retired, I retired on Friday and started Monday with another company, which is a different food vendor. I was the vice president there of finance compliance. So I got to learn that side of the business. My partner here, Robin Sherman, she's been in the industry for.
Thirty-five years.
Thirty-five. So she started when she was ten. So about thirty-five years. But she spent the last twenty years in correctional food service. And she was a vice president of operations. The previous company we worked for had about forty-five accounts, national presence. So in the scheme of things, not just trying to brag her, but she is the leader in the industry. So last few years, where with her, the company, we were really looking at how can correctional food service change? It's been the same since a hundred years ago. And we went and spoke to administrators, inmates, family, and really wanted to come up with a better way of doing it. In the process, we formed a company as owners, and we have two other partners, and we just came up with a better way of doing it. So a couple of things that's different for us, we'll cover quickly a few. One is a software program. We spent time developing a software program. The idea behind that is, one is transparency. The other is really have the involvement, not only of the resident or the inmate, the family, and the sheriff's office. This program allows everybody to be actively involved in their, net individuals' day-to-day basis for food and such. What I mean by that is inmate themselves can help select meals they want. It can also have items that they can buy up to, so they can add additional proteins inside them. So really, it's the idea of putting control back into the inmate, allowing him to really have some meals of choice. And that same aspect, it allows family and friends to be a part of it. They can allow them to join the software program, to really see what their loved one is consuming and using and things like that. The other is, it's all documented. Everything is transparent. So it's something very simple for Lieutenant or her staff to dig into and see if there's anything important for them to look. It also meets compliance. We've met with the Department of Corrections as we formed our company, spent some time with them, formulated our software around the things that they want and the rules that need to be met. So the software is unique. That aspect of it also, there's an accounting package I know for the controller. It's great because it's audible. So if Lieutenant Beck decides that she wants to sell additional site items, it all runs through the program, and everything is documented, and very easy for her to report and see. Another one thing for us really comes down to the food and the quality of the product. I mean, that's really her world and my world. We need to produce not only best quality meals possible. We had to meet all the standards, requirements put by the state of Michigan, and sometimes that's difficult. Right now, with the change in commodities, it's very difficult to be consistent on the products that you're selling. Assuming so, first and foremost is really the service quality. The second is philosophically, you know, we came from an outside vendor. And we've looked at that model and back in the day at work, but really, our feeling now is bringing it back in-house. One of the things we've looked at is, with the staffing problem through COVID, it was no better whether you were an outside vendor or an internal sheriff's office. With that being said, we're finding that sheriff's office that still have what we call in-house service, where they're, you know, the county has the employee longevity, significant quality of the employee is so much better, and the management control of it for the administrative side, it allows them to have a more active role in it. So we do both models, but we really look at the management type of what we're doing. Yeah, it's about bringing back our team. It's all about the teamwork side of it. But we handed out just a little flyer. It's just a brief where we wanted something at least you could, you know, take back with your read and look over and kind of have a little discussion on what we are. We are different than the normal food service companies. Again, I think we've spent enough time doing that. We wanted to, I don't know, just improve in what's going on in the industry right now.
Other than, we have a true passion for this industry. And, you know, we customize programs to meet the county's needs. And then plus everything Rich said. Like Rich said, right now, we do sell other items in the jail. With the tracking of the software, we would be able to keep track of any revenue with the items that we do sell.
Oh, how new is your company?
So we've been doing it for two years. We're new as in the business. So, you know, one of the things we looked at as a group, there's four partners, four owners. We thought about rushing it to market, but we thought, you know, you want to do it right. So for us, it was really, we spent a lot of due diligence and time getting everything lined up. But when we're up and running and as we grow, the process is smoother. So we're new at company, definitely. We have a number of accounts in jails that are bidding or in the process of right now wanting us, but really, this is going to be the first as us. Now, we've been doing this for many years. So it's, the food side is the same as ever. It's just really the updating and how we do the process.
I guess that brings me to my next question. How many counties are you in right now?
No, this is the first.
First one, okay. Well, you got to start someplace.
That's right. And we had mentioned Lieutenant Beck. I mean, again, I'll reiterate, when it comes to correctional food service or starting accounts, she is the master. I'll be honest, she's, she's opened forty accounts or more, and that part of it is easy. I'm the technical side, and I'm the, I'm the law enforcement side of it. So, you know, when we discuss things, I always put Lieutenant Beck's hat on and go, do that, or yes, we do. So, so, yeah, we have a, we fit very well together in model. But same thing, I spent four years with a vending company in the same type of role, doing the same thing. So, yes, experience is there as in what we do. Company is anywhere.
This, this is almost like you're pitching to Shark Tank.
I'm sorry? Are you just into jails, or are you schools, or moving that way?
Yeah, so we, we do have two other divisions. We have senior mate, school mate, are two different divisions. But this is the lane we're working. This is, this is what we know. The thought processes, this is our expertise. We have other people that have expertise in it. I don't, I don't want to cross in that, because I, I mean, this is what I know.
This is where we're, our lane.
Yeah. But this, I will say with the commissioners, that, you know, the software and program, we've been approached. It is very customizable. Our other partner was Microsoft or twenty-five partner. He built the software. Year and a half building it, so it was something that was looking down, and nobody has it in the industry right now.
Okay, so this is basically just informational?
Yes.
Food for thought? No? Or, I mean, that's what I'm trying to get. Where, where, okay, I'm just, I'm not opposed. I'm just saying, I'm just putting out there. I mean, you're looking at.
And my biggest thing is the quality, the quality of the food and the quality of our kitchen manager and our kitchen staff. The company I have right now, we've went through a few kitchen managers in the last few months. And it's a revolving door, and I want to get it back in-house where we have the trust of our kitchen and the control.
All right. Well, I guess at this point, we're going to take it to the next step. Ms. Controller?
So my three cents, because, you know, I can't stop it, too. I'm always hesitant with anything that adds an additional employee, increases, in my opinion, individual liability, has the potential to cost more initially versus long-term savings, those types of things. So I went to the initial meeting with my negative Nancy hat on. But I left thinking that this is really something that we could do, that we could do it eventually at a cost savings that we could surely, in the long term, will see a positive change to the cash flow that we spend on our food service programs for our jail. There's also a benefit that as long as our juvenile detention center is able to still be operational, to bring them in-house as well, which would improve, I think, cost and quality next door. Because it's been a nightmare with the juvenile requirements. I haven't even mentioned that to you yet, by the way.
Right now, the juveniles, what they get served is totally different than what inmates in the jail are getting served. So our kitchen manager, she has to come up with two different meals for each meal, so six meals a day. Oh, that's.
Mandates on the proteins and the milks and dairies are very, it's a school program. It's very specific.
See, and they know all about it already, so that's about it.
Juvenile.
Yes, we had juvenile and senior meals. Um, so that being said, where we're at is we have done two things. We, Lieutenant Beck has done two things already, based on my ask. First off, we have reached out to the union, because obviously, if we add on that kitchen manager and a cook position, it has to be brought and presented to the union as whether or not as a union or non-union position. Costs associated with a union position are more than a non-union, obviously. So therefore, that was a kind of a defining factor for me. And Lieutenant Beck has also created a job description for the kitchen manager position. The cook position is pretty simple. That's a pretty, pretty easy one. So it would be getting our wage and salary committee together again, reviewing that, placing that within a scale, bringing to you those financials for you to review. We'd like to do that all in one shot. We are not in a current long-term contract with a vendor that we are utilizing. There is no other vendor that offers this hybrid that we are interested in. So putting it out for bid doesn't make any sense, because there's nobody else that will bid in the United States of America aside from them. Because, you know, it is Shark Tank, so this is a new product. So.
Sorry for that analogy, but.
So much to my hesitance initially, I am on board. We just want to get all the information to you and get all those financials to you. So I'm thinking that's something we could do. So I'm thinking that's something we could do maybe at the last August meeting. I'm looking at you, Lieutenant.
Oh, definitely.
Okay.
Definitely.
Okay, and then we can go from there, because like I said, we are not in a current contract, so. And Lieutenant has let them know already via letter that we are looking at different models. So we have no intent whatsoever of entering into another long-term contract, so we've already covered that basis with the current vendor.
I like, I like the idea of keeping this on the positive side, you know, jails are jails. As a commissioner, it's quite an expense, which you people all realize, so Lieutenant Beck has done an exceptional job of running that budget. Actually been able to keep expenses in line, with the same time raising revenue, so. Anything we can do to support her, I think commissioners would be for, in in that regard, so if we can work together on this thing and and push forward and see if we can't. Get the, like I say, the quality better.
I think you guys will actually want to eat at the jail when I, when I invite you over.
You know, I notice, I, 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 I noticed it's been a long time since we've been invited, I figured there was a reason for that.
But once, once everything gets in place, you'll definitely be in my.
Okay, well, like, we got a little bit of a timetable, hopefully it's enough window to work it all out with, you know, we'll be probably asking you people for more information and so forth, so. Any other commissioners have anything in regards to this?
Or maybe I should invite you over for lunch today and then we can see why.
That's actually not, we could do a comparison.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know why I brought up Shark Tank, and there are five of us, I don't know which one is Mr. Wonderful, if it's Commissioner Melvin or Commissioner Milburn. All right, I think, I think we got enough information to push forward on this, okay? All right, thank you for your presentation. Okay, number three, twenty twenty-one audit deficit plans, Jody Valentino.
So this is really simple, this is something that happens every other year with both of the funds, interestingly enough, when we were doing the. Review of the agenda, Clerk Stevenson actually said, wait, let me guess, Law Library and Childcare Fund. So what ends up happening with our budget is obviously we've budgeted for X amount. I go through and I try to grab all of those bills that would accrue back to twenty twenty-one, but were paid in twenty twenty-two. And clearly I missed some, that's how this has occurred, it's normally how it occurs. It just means that there was a not enough cash in the bank. Plus monies owing that balanced out when we were actually audited. So you have two motions that are set, the Law Library Fund Deficit Elimination Plan Resolution, which is number two on your motions today. And that basically is a plan that says, hey, the Law Library was short three thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars. I will tell you, this one specifically, when the penal fines come due, they go into a fund that is not the Law Library Fund. And the penal fines are traditionally transferred over from that specific fund to the Law Library Fund. That is where we were lacking, somewhere between the treasurer and I, who balances out the penal fund as statute. And myself, we totally missed the fact that we forgot to transfer five thousand dollars. So the money was there, it has been transferred effective at the beginning of twenty twenty-two, which you can see other, other penal fines do. In general funds, and this is the actual resolution that will get set with the table to offset those things, so. That would be the first Law Library Fund. The second one is the Childcare Fund Deficit Elimination Plan Resolution. The Childcare Fund actually did go into twenty twenty-one with a twenty-two thousand two hundred and sixty-eight. Dollar for once fund balance, however, that was a missing bill of fourteen thousand four hundred and forty dollars. That I did not see as an accrual, that the auditor deemed as an accrual for a long-term child placement. The bill came in in March for about six months worth of stays in twenty twenty-one. So therefore they were in a deficit of fourteen thousand four hundred and forty dollars. Based on that information, essentially the only thing we can do to fix that is transfer more money over from the general fund. So it increases our allocation for that, that will be just another area Keely will be helping me oversee as those bills come in and are submitted for payment. She will be marking any now that are going to be, she didn't know that yet. That will actually be, need to be accrued or are creditable to the year before, and that will help us reduce that. So those are the two deficit elimination plans that I would need please for you to approve today. And if you have any questions or concerns about how that happened, I am here to answer.
Right, and then this was, this was pointed out to us at our audit presentation two weeks ago by Mr. Anderson. It's not uncommon when we have these budget presentations or audit presentations that there's. Some minor adjustments, and that's part of it is is the Law Library, which the deficit isn't that much, thirty-two hundred dollars. When it comes to the Childcare Fund, it's fourteen thousand dollars, but you know, in the grand scheme of things, that's only like one percent. But there's a lot of monies, Jake will attest to this, I think there's a lot of monies coming in, there's a lot of monies going out, and a lot of times it's just a matter of the dates and so forth on getting that right here, correct? So it's, you know, I, it's, I don't want to make a big deal out of this, it's a minor thing, we have them every year when we approve the audit, we're here to do it again. Was pointed out to us by our auditor, which is why we have an audit. Everything was done and the county is in real good shape as far as the audit is concerned, we're at the unbalance of seventeen percent, yeah, correct?
Finally.
Finally, we're good for this year, so we're we're in good shape for this year, so. It's on for a motion today, it was presented two weeks ago, and it's not, nobody did anything wrong. I'll point that out, all right, so everything's good, anybody else on that? Okay, item number four, reclassification of the Director of Veterans Affairs position, Jody Valentino again.
So our Wage and Salary Committee has been super busy this year. Traditionally, we do not do the offset of these types of things. But I think after two years, people are finally used to the process and understanding of having a correct job description. We have two, so four and five, I will start with the Director of Veterans Affairs position. When the Director of Veterans Affairs position was placed into the initial grade system. It was a very basic job description that was more in line with a benefits counselor than an actual oversight of a department. Director-type position, this actually was one that was requested to be reviewed by the Wage and Salary Committee. Because they felt that the duties and the placement was not correct. So job description was updated, a little bit of information that our Wage and Salary Committee probably had. It currently sits at an actual grade five. Which obviously we have ten grades altogether. After reviewing the job description, the Wage and Salary Committee felt that the Director of Veterans Affairs position. Should be increased to a six, a grade six. And just to give you some ideas of what sits within a grade six, that is our Housing Director, Director of Animal Control. The Director of Juvenile Detention Center. So it it fits pretty nicely in their probation officer position as well. So the motion would be at the next meeting to reclassify the Director of Veterans Affairs position. To the grade six position on our Ross Common County pay grade chart.
We'd have a wage amount on it also.
At this point in time, it, we didn't actually assign, but if we look at where this person is currently placed. Which is a maximum at the step seven, that is currently twenty-five dollars and eighteen cents per hour. Moving it to the same step at a grade six is twenty-eight seventy-one per hour.
What was the other twenty-five what?
Twenty-five dollars and eighteen cents.
Thank you. Hey, any commissioners have anything to add in regards to the reclassification of Director Affairs position?
I'm kind of a numbers guy in referral, what does that equate to at the end of the year? I'm trying to put you, I, again, I embarrassed to try to put you in a spot, give me an idea.
I have to calculate.
Thirty-five or a forty-hour position?
Thirty-seven point, thirty-seven point five, it is a salary exempt position.
Figured out later, I just, that's something I would, I'd want to know, thank you.
Yeah, we don't need to know that now.
I'm good.
I'd just like, I'd just like to say at this point, I was, I've been here a long time, as long as Mr. Milburn, he's a little longer in the tooth than I am, but. I remember when we, the Veterans Affairs was across the hall from us. And our veterans had to sit out in the hallway waiting for the, for some attention from a gentleman in Traverse City, I can't remember what his capacity was, but our, our volunteer, it was. Run by volunteer at the time and 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 done very well, but it's grown to the point, and we, what we've done with veterans, it warrants this reclassification. Veterans Affairs, but I just, I was only pointing out, basically for the public is, is that where we were and where we're at now. I mean, it's, our Veterans Affairs is, I'm considering one of the best in the state.
That's what I was going to say, Mr. Chairman, I'd go as far as say we have one of the finest showcase Veterans Affairs offices in the entire state of Michigan. I, I don't say that lightly, I, I really, really mean that, we truly do have, and then we were down in this morning last night, I was there at the Veterans Get Together, the Sheriff's Department was there, I mean. Yeah, Delicia was there, you know, Noel was there, the whole gang was there, and he was there. I mean, these people work hard, and the thing is they're really making a difference in the lives of those veterans, and especially ones with, I know, Mr. Milburn is very, you know. Passionate about the twenty-two deaths a day, a year that, a day that the veterans are suffering, so. Now, we have one of the finest veterans departments in the state of Michigan, thanks.
You talked long enough, so current salary is forty-nine thousand one oh one. The new salary would be fifty-five thousand nine eighty-four fifty. When you include the cost for the defined contribution and the difference in payroll taxes. Seven thousand five hundred seventy-one dollars and eighty-five cents from the veterans.
Guess it was good that I talked long.
Okay, anything else, any commissioner? Okay, item five, reclassification of probate family court administrator position, Jody's up again.
Okay, so our probate court administrator position, when it was initially placed in, that position was actually only in charge of probate court. There was not the family court aspect of that. That has changed in the last year and a half, and that position has actually oversight now for probate. Family Court, which also insu, ensures administrative oversight of front of the court as well. So obviously their scope of services that they provide on the court side has increased. This position sat at a grade six, which obviously now we're proposing for a Director of Veterans Affairs. Other positions within the grade six are a Housing Director, Director of Animal Control, Deputy Director. After review, it was the decision of the Wage and Salary Committee to place that within a grade seven. A grade seven includes the Equalization Director, Treasurer, Undersheriff, Director of Central Dispatch, Clerk Register of Deeds. And the Director of Information Technology positions. Currently, that person sits at the grade six at twenty-six dollars and thirty-two cents. This is also a salary exempt position, moving them to a seven would bump it to thirty dollars and twenty-four cents. It is also thirty-seven point five hours as well, so you're essentially looking at a three-dollar difference. One of the things I will say for this one is it is going to be roughly seven thousand dollars more to the general fund. To have that happen when you add in the defined contribution as well as. If you add in the additional payroll taxes as well. I don't like to add money to the general fund, but I will say that budgetarily wise, probate and family courts. Have done a much better job of managing their showers collect. As far as any type of monetary months owed, they are also doing a much better job under her watch of bringing in. Any type of of funding for processing wills and those types of things, they don't have a huge. Statutory ability to receive funding for services. But they definitely are doing a a much better job in the last five years than ever before. So they are consistently meeting budgets, so I believe that they are able to offset this increase.
I guess this is my question for for Jake, is that additional in that budget you presented?
Yeah.
This is separate, got you, thank, thank you, but you're in the same office, right?
Yes.
Okay. Had the right place, but the wrong guy. Okay, all right, any commissioner have anything to add on that? Okay, so that's a reclassification also, all right, with those, with item four and five, we'll be bringing that forward, next meeting, correct? All right, item number six, Central Michigan District Health Department, twenty twenty-three allocation. Three years ago at the Health Department, we went to, we got to looking at our allocation. And the allocations at the Health Department hadn't been looked at in like twenty years, and that particular one right there. We have six counties, and Isabella County absorbed a sixty thousand dollar increase because the allocation is based on. Fifty percent SEV and fifty percent, correct me here, Jody, I've lost my train of thought, the other fifty percent is.
Population.
Population, right, okay, so anyway, when we did that, and so that this would not happen again, we got it changed back to where it was supposed to be and got it looked at. And we, we have, we actually got a refund in Ross Common County. I think all five counties, five counties got a refund, I say refund, they got a reduction. And Isabella went up substantially, which they weren't too pleased about, but they couldn't fight it, so. It went into effect, but at the same time, we put in that would look, be looked at every three years, so it didn't go to another twenty years again. So it's been looked at and it looked at the population, and that was the biggest fluctuation was, was. Population, Isabella County in this particular instance went down substantially. And then consequently, everybody but Aaron Act went up, so our increase based on that allocation is twenty-two hundred dollars for the Health Department, so. But it's done per the board's thing, it was based on population, the reason Isabella went down is because. CMU enrollment, I've been told, is down twenty-five percent, so that's where the big reduction come from, so. That'd be something, and I escaped me, what that figure is, I'm thinking it's twenty-two hundred dollars, right, there, thereabouts.
I'm swallowing, but yes, it's round about twenty-two hundred.
All right, so I'd like to bring that forward to you next meeting. All right, with that, that was a pretty heavy Fort Worth session, we're out of here at ten minutes too, we'll be back here at ten o'clock for the regular meeting, thank you. We will, I will assume we're going to start momentarily, but we're called to order, we will wait for Mr. Mr. Melvin.
Better put a radio on it.
Heather. There he is. We're already, we're already, we're waiting for you. Hey, Mr. Milburn, do you lead us in the pledge, please?
Please, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. to the republic which stands foundation under God, in the middle of the
Hey, thank you. Item number three, roll call of board members. Amy, please.
Russo?
Present.
Melvin? Schneider?
Here.
Melbourne?
Here.
Muckenthaler?
Here.
Hey, item four, approval of the agenda, please.
Mr. Chair?
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Commissioner Melbourne, seconded by Commissioner Russo to approve the agenda. Any further comments from any commissioner in regards to the agenda, please? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Muckenthaler?
Yes.
Melbourne?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Melvin?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Mashkarri.
Hey. Item number five, public comment, agenda items only. Any public comment in regards to the agenda at this time from any, anybody in the public? Nothing out there in Zoom land? Okay, thank you, Andy. Onto number six, administrator controller report.
Hi.
Too quick for you?
No, you're fine. I just, I, I don't feel great today, so I've been like that foggy situation. Lawsuit update, really nothing in regards to everything with the exception of the mock versus Roscommon County at all. Settlement acceptance, so that one will be deleted off of my list. All four of the Ostrigan versus Roscommon Counties, Roscommon County, Schneider, Schneider at all, and Melvin at all have had no change. The opiate suit, again, we are just simply waiting for the last couple outlying counties to finalize with the state in order to have that money set for dispersment. Then once we get the money, we'll have to make that decision about where you would like to allocate it. I already know where I want to allocate it, so I'm gonna have to ask you yes. And that's simply because there are things that will be very beneficial to our county directly versus indirectly, which we would love to see as well. No really new news on the legislative update. We had the Northern Michigan Commissioners Association meeting two Mondays ago, and the representative from MAC was there, and she provided us with a lengthy list of things that people are trying to slam through in a lame duck. It is amazing where we sit with everything. Odds are, nothing will really get done based on the information that she provided to us, because everybody has something that they would like to see. As you well know, I actually did payroll for the first time in six years. And you all got paid, so that was successful. But it was a great learning experience or reminder experience for what Noel goes through on a day-to-day basis. And super happy in the office now to know that we'll get Julie trained, and then there will be three of us that can at least make sure everybody gets money in the bank and all the stuff that happens afterwards, we can deal with later. So, just a, just kind of an interesting little way of doing things and, and watching.
My comment to that is, is that you're a great backup, but Julie would be better. I need to take it off your plate. That's why, I want it off your plate, all right? Thank you.
Probably the most important things that I wanted to update you on today are where we as Roscommon County stand with the Northern Michigan community mental health. I wanna say uproar, but there is obviously a Grant Traverse County and then Leland County that have put into motion the idea of leaving community mental health as we have currently formed. If that were to happen, and they are pushing forward, it would be about a year that we would have to redesign a new community mental health or join an existing community mental health. It has not officially happened yet, but Chairman Schneider and I, and then undersheriff, hey, undersheriff. I'll bring him up now.
I was gonna say, should I bring him up, or you bring him up?
We'll just wait on that. He'll just come up. Undersheriff's good like that. I will probably let him update you a little bit more on the most recent happening. The Chairman Schneider, undersheriff, and myself are involved in a work group of administrators and chairman for community mental health members in trying to redesign the enabling agreement. And we thought that that was going to be a very positive thing, but I'm not so sure now. So I'm gonna let undersheriff collect on that now and kinda.
So, Jody's been gracious in allowing me to be directly involved in this. I really have no authority in this group whatsoever. I'm more of a large end user of anything through the jail and the sheriff's office of community mental health.
Which is why we want you there.
Right. So, I, I have spoken my mind, and so far, I think Jody's been okay with that. I thought our meeting that we attended went very well. There was somewhat of a consensus among the group and among the counties that we were going to push forward. There was certainly some apprehension from Grant Traverse and Leland County about the, the extension of an offer to a new director within community mental health, and that was clearly an issue at our meeting. I did my best to ask some very pointed questions about what that looked like going forward. Is from Leland and Grant Traverse perspective. They, from my perspective in that meeting, they assured us that that was not an issue, that they wanted to open up the enabling agreement and work through some issues that were in the enabling agreement and try to make things function better. I think all of the counties were in agreement with that, and that was our focus leaving that meeting, or at least as far as I was concerned, that was our focus leaving that meeting. And then they had their board meeting, and that is not the focus of Grant Traverse in that board meeting. What was represented to me by one of our Roscommon board members was that Grant Traverse had kicked two of their board members off who were supportive of the new director and brought two new members in who were not supportive of the new director, and in essence, held everyone else hostage and said, "We're gonna vote off the new director, or we're leaving community mental health." Basically, you guys either need to do this, or we're leaving right now. And that is not what was represented to us at that meeting. And to me, this isn't about who the director is, who the director is not. To me, this is about either we're gonna move forward together as community mental health as a group, or we're not. I, I don't, I don't wanna continue to be held captive by Grant Traverse and Leland County because they don't like what's going on within the group, so they constantly threaten to withdraw and take their toys out of the sandbox and go home. There has to be some sort of a solution to that. I, I think I made my opinions clear in the email that I sent in response to that, and it sounded like Saki, Crawford.
Foxford, Wexford.
Were all along the same line of thinking of what I had sent out in response to that. That's, that's a real brief summary of what's gone on. I don't know if that leads to questions in anybody's mind, but you, did I get that close to accurate?
Close, close to accurate. Like, I, I agree with you. When we walked out of that meeting in Cadillac on that day, two issues. An enabling agreement, which hadn't been updated, needs to be updated because it's twenty years old, and we all agreed on it. Okay, as far as a director, that committee is, it's not our job to hire as a director, so we don't want to even be involved in that as far as I'm concerned, but that still needs to be resolved. Then, and now, since then, it'll be interesting, because we got another meeting on Monday in Cadillac to see what direction we're going again. But since then, like you said, Grant Traverse, we're not happy with their two commissioners that they had on that hiring committee or on that committee. So they took them off and put two more, two more on. I questioned whether they can do that or not, but I guess they can, because if the chairman okayed it, they could do it. As they usually set them up the first of every year at their organizational meetings.
And I don't know how that works in Grant Traverse either, or to our members. They said that the four members who had been there were present at that meeting, and we're, we're talking about civil litigation involving that, so I don't know.
Right, so there's, there's some, there's some other things that are going on. We'll probably find out more on, on, on Monday, but a little speculation on my part, what's going on, but with no, with the director situation being where it is, and we'll see what's gonna affect this enabling agreement that we were moving ahead for, ahead with, so. This will be a really interesting meeting Monday, one.
It will. And Nate, who is the Jody of Grant Traverse County, I think is a very smart fellow. I, I have some respect for Nate, but I think he's stuck in the middle of a whole much politics over there, and I think you gotta have a lot of the left hands trying to do one thing, the right hands trying to do something else, and he's stuck right in the middle.
Right, and we have gotten feedback. I have personally talked to Commissioner from Wexford, was at the commissioners meeting two weeks, two Mondays ago. We got DeGale from Saki that's reached out with an email. Got Crawford, Paul Campo has put his in there, so we've got, the four counties have kinda weighed in on us, and the way the direction goes is, is that they don't wanna be there. We'll form our own.
I would agree with that. Not that I have a say in it, but.
Not that you have a say in it, but I'm just saying, if it comes to that, because the thing with Grant Traverse, you have to understand is, is that whatever Grant Traverse does, Leland basically has a gun to their head and has to do it too, because they can't, they're, they're a small county, they, they have to tie their wagon to Grant Traverse, and that's exactly what's going on.
I agree with that, too.
And like I say, and then look, and talking to that one commissioner, they've had enough of this power struggle that's going on. But Grant Traverse is trying to pull on us.
Well, and I, I think it's an internal power struggle with Grant Traverse that's affecting everybody else.
Right.
Yeah.
Their politics is making us way into the health department.
Yep, yep.
Yes, sir.
A reminder for background, I don't know if you remember this or not. Obviously, before the enabling, you went from twenty that took into account that Roscommon County came into this with a building only paid for. And Traverse County had a four million dollar building with four million dollars out. That has since been paid off. So, their share of the contribution to the program in the enabling agreement was based on it came in with a four million dollar building that's been paid off, and they need to take that into account when they're making their payments. So every time you get a new group of commissioners, like the Premier on Grant Traverse, they don't know that. Nobody tells them that. And they're all, you know, up and like, oh, we're paying too much and not getting don't know anything about their four million dollar building in downtown Traverse City that they now have the mortgages paid off. How are we gonna deal with that if they try to back out if they're?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, Ken. Might be, I might put that, we might put that in our back pocket for Monday.
Well, quite a bit of conversation in the background in separate meetings that involve some of our local counties and administrators regarding assets that have come in, and what assets would go where if there was a division, and also liabilities. It sounds like there's a significant pension liability on the Grand Traverse side of community mental health.
Correct.
So, there, there's a lot of conversation about that in the background and what that would look like, and what the, the fight would be if, if there was a separation, and, and what liabilities would go where and what assets would go where, so.
And attends those for me. Thanks, Ben. Because he needed another meeting like I did.
Joe, are you, you going Monday?
I will, sir.
Okay, can I get a ride? All right.
Although I'm kind of a bottom line guy, I think in the day, I just care about how it's gonna affect the citizens of our county. Politics, I could care less about the politics. I know maybe that's not the right thing to say, but in the day, it's, it serves as that we're elected to serve our people that we, that's our job. Their job is to do the same thing. I'm interested in only the services that affect our people. So, those guys gotta get their act together. Whatever that act is, I'm not sure, but the bottom line is it's about serving people. So I, I appreciate your service on that, because I appreciate your guidance and recommendations.
Well, I think that's important, too. I mean, we have all this politics going on over on this side of the coin, which is interrupting everything and making things complicated, but over here, in the world that we live in, practical everyday life, I, I'm ecstatic with what community mental health is doing currently. Like Jake was talking about, with the lack of services statewide. I mean, there's significant restraints that everybody's dealing with, and every time we go to sheriff's conference, that's one of the number one things that every county's talking about, is they're just our pets, whether it's a doll or juvenile, there's ju, they're just not out there. So, every CMH in the state is working under those same constraints. But the services that we're getting in the, in the open relationship we have right now, Stacy Kaminsky is the one that we deal with the most directly, if there's any issues or any problems. I think our relationship is the best it's been in the twenty-three years that I've been here, so.
Then I'll retract my statement a little bit and say that I'm enthusiastically helping, excited to hear that, because I just care about the services that the people receive.
And I think that's the big concern with the whole thing, is how do we continue what we have going that's good right now, whether that's joining another CMH, whether that's forming our own. And I've said all along, and I said in my email the other day, I think what's best for everybody is for Northern Lakes and all the counties to stay together.
Correct.
Ultimately, but I'm not sure that can happen if it's one county trying to hold everybody else hostage for everything that they want. I, I don't know how that works.
That's a strong word.
Yeah.
That's, that's a strong thing, because of six counties, we are definitely gonna be stronger. You know, Ken's, you know, Ken's right with the, with the money that the other, the other five counties have helped Grand Traverse out with their, with their building up there. But we're, it's a stronger health, a mental health department, the six of us than it would be if we had four. Now, can it be done? Yeah, it can be done, but it's gonna be a tremendous amount of work, and I, I know, if it's not broke, don't fix it.
And I, I think you, I don't know how you get a commitment for, from Grand Traverse to go in one direction, when it seems like they have people that wanna go in different directions in that area, so. I think that's the, the question that needs to be answered on Monday.
Right.
Free service.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
One, one o'clock on Monday, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They'll leave at twelve twenty, and you'll be there ten minutes early. Okay, few more things.
I've already, I've already rolled him once. He doesn't even turn on his little flashers. No, it's not that bad. He's, he's actually had nice discussions on the way over. Okay.
Few more things.
Oh, you got some more?
Yeah, I was just wanting undersheriff to come up, because he's been attending a lot of these. I mean, there is definitely a need for the knowledge of what the actual services are that on a practical level most of us do not possess sitting at this table. That undersheriff has, and he has fought diligently for several of the inmates in receiving care and treatment, so he's been down in the trenches a lot more than me. One of the other big areas is the Holton Lake Lake Level Control Structure Special Assessment. So, where we are at currently with this is we are getting a date to hold that initial hearing that says this is the proposal for the special assessment district. Obviously, that is held in Circuit Court. Circuit Court wishes to place a full day on the docket, reserved specifically for that, because that way, any residents that come in are able to have that time, have that dedication, be presenting information to Judge Bennett, who would oversee that as the thirty-four Circuit Court judge. The big thing with that from our end is unfortunately, with the way that our Circuit Court docket is, because it is just excessively heavy, and COVID, of course, backed it up just to start with. We are looking at October eighth as the date that that hearing is going to be scheduled. We wanted it in early September, closer to Labor Day. That is just not something that the court is able to accommodate. They did review that, and just, there's no way to juggle some of these other pieces around, nor is it fair to those cases. However, early October, we still will have all of our snowbirds present.
October eighth is a Saturday.
Not October eighth, but I'll be direct for you. Probably the sixth or something like that then, but it is the first week in October.
A little small.
A very active media campaign and informational campaign to come out of this. Commissioner Russo and I are gonna make a video together. That didn't sound good. In regards to the special assessment.
With or without.
We are going to work with the law firm and the engineering firm in order to actually make like a YouTube informational video that would able to be processed, put out. There is a website that's going to come. There will be a very interactive GIS map that will be available. We will also host some informational gatherings via Zoom for participants as well, just so they can grant that. We have currently placed out the specialist, proposed special assessment district for this We have currently placed out the specialist, proposed special assessment district for this. To all of the involved township assessors that they may review. This is. Unique in that a lake level control special assessment is for direct. Access like users because that is where the benefit comes. Um, so there is a difference between what you will see as this special assessment district propose versus what you see for the weed special assessments. Um, they are two completely different sections of an act. So we know that there will probably be questions. In regards to, well, hey, my neighbor four feet back isn't involved. This is for direct lake access only. That is what the courts have had held through the years. Um, and so we are making sure that the assessors have two weeks essentially to. Chime back in and say, hey, this property has changed. You weren't aware of it. They don't have needed access anymore, or hey, this has been split. There's actually two parcels now that should be charged. Um, the additional thing is there will not be costs at this circuit. Those, we don't have a clue what the project's going to cost. Um, so therefore, and unfortunately. I know people always want to know, the first question is how much is this going to cost? The answer is we don't know that yet. Um, but when it moves forward. There will be that apportionment based on the variations of factors similar to what you see in a drain district. Um, so it's not a one size fits all special assessment. It's the best way for me to put it. So that is where we are at with that. Um, just a couple of other very short uh. Ideas for you guys to take in. Obviously, I spent a little bit of time with the childcare fund budget in meeting with. Uh, Mr. Kalini and they actually had initially told me that they were going to be looking at almost a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. In request for additional funding. So the fact that we have come down so low is a big kudos to them as well.
I have one question, Jody.
Go ahead.
Here.
What Dave?
Uh, after we have that hearing, when do we have the hearing for the lake level to raise it?
Well, that will be next. Um, that we will not schedule that until the actual special assessment district is in place. As far as being approved by the Circuit Court. After the Circuit Court approves that, then we will know um. Who really has that information to chime in? That's kind of the big thing. So we will start the couple of studies that will be needed. Um, Spicer is is going to head that up for us to see what a truly accurate. Lake level for Holton Lake should be. Um, once we have that information, then we'll schedule. So my guess is probably we're looking at another three to five months um before that hearing would be held. So you'll have one, you'll have three to five months with all of that information available and that suggestion being made. Um, and then from there, we'd move forward on the actual repairs of it because clearly you're not going to get bids. Um, on engineering and repair and or replacement of a lake level control structure. If you're unsure what the actual lake level you're trying to control is.
That's what I kind of said yesterday, so.
Okay. Go ahead, Ken.
Do you think they'll look at how the Reedsburg Dam affects the uh control of the.
You know.
Holton Lake level because um, you know, Bob had a problem at at Lake St. Helen one many years ago. They had a bridge that had a very narrow opening and it didn't make so much difference what he did. At the lake level control structure, it was determined how by how much water could come through that narrow opening. On that bridge until they rebuilt the bridge and made it an open span. And then his lake level control device could make a better difference. And you know, if, you know, as engineering, are they going to, Spicer going to look at how how that. Uh, Reedsburg Dam affects the Holton Lake level because there might be a problem with, no matter what you do. It's what they've already done downstream and it backs up.
We had uh, we, the resorder, we had did a full article on that and the paper was that about three years ago? And they claim Reedsburg Dam does have no, nothing to do with Holton Lake. The DEQ and the DNR. And is there any way I could get a copy of that article that was published in the paper? You done a fabulous job on it. And they said Reedsburg doesn't have no. Nothing to do with the backwaters, which I find hard to believe.
So I would say um in the conversations that we have had. That the engineering group in the law firm we are working at are very aware of the fact that. Um, the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners have. Absolutely no control or say over what happens at a dam that is located in another county. Um, however, will. Perceived per, trying to think of the best way to put this, um, what they do and don't do can affect Holton Lake. So when they look at what the appropriate lake level is for Holton Lake. They will have to take into consideration in the engineering then, once that lake level is set. Um, the engineering of that structure would have to take into account. The operation of the Reedsburg in order to properly maintain. Because what is the correct lake level for Holton Lake doesn't have anything to do with how they maintain Reedsburg Dam. But the actual structure that we would need to maintain the lake level does.
Think, I could chime in just quick. In 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 the engineering analysis, all factors should be considered.
Absolutely.
Oh, definitely. It's going to be a expensive fix. I know that much.
I think the big thing, and that's where I give you kudos, is um. We're looking at everything. So instead of us just taking bubble gum and duct tape to fix a problem. Um, temporarily, it is a long-term plan to make sure that A equals B equals C. So I do appreciate that.
Yeah, and I just, I'm excited to move forward, change that summer lake level where it should really be. And fix the control structure. So we don't have to worry about.
By getting a special assessment in place, it'll also help us to apply for grant monies.
Yeah.
Because at this point, we can talk about grant monies, but until we put in for one to find out if we get a yes or we get a no. And I do know that particularly from the state of Michigan, there's a lot of funding out there for for dams right now. Although ours aren't dams, they're lake level control structures. I get reminded of that all the time. But there's monies out there and I don't want to see all that money going to Sanford and Edenville.
Correct, but we, we have to jump over this first.
We gotta jump over these hurdles to get there.
Even apply.
Right.
I know it's been a very long process. There's a lot of people, you know, out there thinking we're not doing nothing, but. You know, it's steps that are being taken and we're moving along.
We applied right now. We wouldn't get anything because we don't have those things at twice.
We're not secured.
Right, so. Okay, anything else? Anything else? Commissioners, anything about Jody's report, please? Unlike we almost moved on, but.
I'll be done for today. See you.
Okay, item seven, correspondence. Item A is McCosta County. It's got a resolution regards to auto insurance, which we've seen a number of those. Item B is a resident letter in regards to the ORV ordinance. Um, whose area is that in? Ken, have you had any conversation with that gentleman or? Okay, all right, thank you.
This is, this is a different letter.
Oh.
This one's brand new. Um, and actually it is Lion Township, not Garrish Township.
Oh, I apologize.
So we did, Commissioner Melvin has actually reached out because that gentleman actually is my neighbor right down the road. So I just took the dog for a walk to look at it. Um, and it is. Um, I see why he would be concerned. He has put quite a bit of money into uh rock and gravel for his drive. But extends out into the dirt road. Um, and Commissioner Melvin has reached out several times to that gentleman. Um, has not received a call back, but he has tried.
This one for Lion Township.
This letter is specific to a resident that's actually in Lion Township and came via letter addressed to the entirety of the board. So this is the first that you've actually seen this. Um, and this is not one where uh there was any contact through the Sheriff's Department with this gentleman. He kept a weekend log.
Thank you, Ben. We did speak with the supervisor. I had a meeting with her, Ben and the sheriffs. The undersheriff and the sheriffs had a meeting with the supervisor. I'm actually going to get a hold of a, you know, we don't have the funds to go out there and watch their streets. But I'm going to get a hold of a CO from the DNR and see on the holiday weekend. There's two roads in question and if they could do low patrolling.
So if I can just bring you guys up to speed on what's going on over the last month or two on this issue. OrVs are a hot topic, um specifically the county ordinance in allowing OrVs on the on the roadway. I would say the three hottest areas are Lion, Markey and Richfield. Um, regularly receive complaints from people uh complaining about OrVs on the roadways. And why aren't we enforcing the county ordinance? And I did have extensive conversation with Lion. Sheriff was in on that conversation. Part of the problem is, is that OrVs are the worst when our people are the busiest. So July fourth weekend. Likely our day cars are going to have two or three calls backed up going from call to call. And they're not going to be able to be on Samuel Set Boulevard looking for OrVs. And so we've, we've talked through some of those things with them. Um, and I, you're all well aware that this is a. A political catch twenty-two because half the people want the OrVs and half the people don't want the OrVs. So that that's another. Factor as we consider what the solution is. Um, we, one of the things that most people don't understand is that our ORV money for OrV enforcement from the state is specifically for trails. Not for roadways. And so people want us to be out enforcing OrV enforcement on the roadways, but the state doesn't allow for that. Um, we, Brian Olson is the sergeant for the DNR here. Um, he has been for the last two years on our seasonal patrols. He works on boats and OrVs both. Um, he actually spent an entire day out in Lion Markey area. Just focusing on golf carts, OrVs, dirt bikes, those kinds of things, week or two ago. Um, but I don't, I don't know where, how we solve the problem. I know I was at the Lion Township meeting last week. And it sounded like the township as a whole is going to be sending a letter. The township board was going to be sending a letter to the Board of Commissioners about. The problem with OrVs and where do we find funding for specific enforcement for OrVs on roadway? I don't know what that looks like. I'm happy to be at a table to talk about it, but it's a, it's an issue that has gotten bigger and bigger over the last few summers. And I don't know where we go from here with it, but that that's what's going on on our end of things over the last couple of months is.
And golf carts too.
Golf carts.
Oh, I think.
Which is separate, that's a separate, golf carts are separate from the ordinance.
Depends on who you talk to. That's always, that's always been a very debatable thing.
I know it. I don't want to get into that. I haven't got enough time for that today.
One of the things um in, when I have talked to some township officials in the, during the summers and last summer and before. Um, that is very, very, very important for residents in this board to remember is the county and. Tim, you probably remember this. The county ordinance was written to give each individual township. The authority to decide what roads should be applicable for OrVs or not. There is not a single township, and I sat on the township board when this, uh, my township board when this went through. There is not a single township that chose to enact any closures of roads to OrVs. So the issue comes in that how does the county say. Hmm, that road, that road and that road in that township are not going to be open to OrVs because that's where we've gotten the most complaints. It truly is a township decision. They have the ability to put an ordinance in place that makes those changes. And again, I love my townships because I've served, but we are getting it booted up to us because it's a county ordinance. Well, the county ordinance mimics exactly what the state says that we can do. And there is, there is state laws on OrVs that we must adhere to. Um. And your ordinance does that, our ordinance does that. Um, I will say there is no funding. Or OrV patrol that is not directly funded. As a matter of fact, next year, our portion of the match just for the trails. Is probably. Right now, in my budgetary ahead of time mind, on the chopping block. Because that is not a necessity as far as something that we must statutorily perform. Based on where we're, where we're headed next year for expenses. Um, so all of these things are going to be kept. I would love to work with the individual townships and have the undersheriff, sheriff. And representative um from the township work together on making a plan where they could craft their own ordinance. That closes roads. Um, I will tell you just from an area that I live in in Garrish Township. Oh, Tim, you're my neighbor. You know this too. Um, it was not a, it's an open like twenty acre area that was all logging roads. People walk their dogs, rode OrVs, golf carts. Um, it has never been designated trails. However, people use them as trails. Personally, I don't care. I walk my dog back there. We hide when the OrVs come. They are loud. You can hear them. Um, but there was a proactivity through the DOs. To replace those signs, closing them down again for OrV traffic because it has. Going into private property, complaints, et cetera. Um. The amount of OrV and golf cart traffic now in front of my house this summer, since that has happened, has tripled. So maybe there's a way to look at acquiring land to create some trails in Roscommon County as well. So I think it's a double, double project. Um, and there certainly are grant fundings available for. Uh, parks and recreation opportunities as well. There are plenty of sense.
I I think the response you'll get to that from the townships is we can close all the roads we want. They don't adhere to the rules that are in place now. Why are they going to follow those rules? And how do we enforce that? And that's the problem that I don't know the answer to and I don't think.
And you, you, you alluded to it earlier, whether you're, you're talking Memorial Weekend or.
Yeah.
Or or Fourth of July, you could equate that to the lakes.
Yes, yep.
And I've had, I've had somebody tell me after the Fourth of July, there were too many boats on the lake.
I have answers for that.
But I'm, but I'm just saying is, is that, yeah, that boat launch in St. Helen has just backed up. And the same thing happens at Higgins Lake, it's so thick, it's like state park, all of them. So. When they're here, they're here and the business community wants them here. But how do we placate them too? So it's, it's, it's an ongoing issue.
I do think it's a big driver of our economy right now, but it does come along with its own, own set of.
Its own set of problems. Um, one of the things I did, that, that, that Richfield Township Police has done, which I thought whoever did that was pretty, pretty smart. They've got an older police car. As you're coming into St. Helen from I seventy-five. They put it out, they put the police car out there, the black and old, black and white out there, and then they put a sign up there, OrVs twenty-five. Miles per hour speed limit. And I think that has done more to slow things down a little bit over there in that regard. That's being proactive.
And they have so many down in Richfield.
It's.
Crazy down there.
I gotta admit, on some weekends, particularly for it, it's like the wild, wild west with the OrVs. But then I see. Or, I mean, golf carts everywhere. It's stuff with, I've seen vehicles with engines on them. I didn't know you could put engines on.
If you're out there on a weekend and talking to people, there are people that are coming to St. Helen. Because they get online and and search from all over the country and it's listed as one of the top OrV destinations in the country, so.
Right.
You're being beat in St. Helens, they can write off because riders.
Right.
I clean. And. Do the rentals.
My daughter was coming, is coming from St. Louis, Missouri, and she looked at renting one of those units and 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 online. I went and looked at it. And they advertised how they had access to the OrV trails right behind this place. My wife and I actually drove over to see where this place was located. That was, that would be for an OrV having for these people. And and guess what? That thing rented continuously.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have been, they have been proactive with that and I think, I think it's helped.
It's like, I'm a short drive. We have signs. Tell me that when I would have really nice signs printed. OrVs twenty-five miles an hour and it's, oh.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
I wasn't invited this time, but I figured I'd just come anyway.
Yes, you best do it long enough. You can come anytime you want. Okay, uh. Where was that? C, Michigan Association of Counties, uh, grant alert from one of the county, from the county MAC. D is Northern Lakes Community Mental Health, which they're. Community Mental Health, which they're having their annual hearing, which is a separate issue, it's not an issue, it's just something that come. But they're having their annual public hearing in regards to their share of information with the community on funding and providing opportunity for community members to give input to assist them. In identifying, addressing needs and gaps for the annual planning purposes. Item E is Reese Riley, that's in regards to a mineral right lease. That's everything under correspondence. Any commissioners have any questions in regards to that? Any other correspondence? Item A, monthly department reports, Roscommon Counties, Roscommon County twenty-twenty-two CB report. Item B is Michigan State University Extension Report. Item C is the Roscommon County Central Dispatch Report for June. And item D is the Economic Development Corporation May and June Directors Report. Any questions from any commissioners in regards to monthly department reports? Onto number nine, any visitors would like to be recognized at this time. This would be the appropriate part for Mr., place for Mr. O'Rourke to come up. There you go.
Morning, everybody. Again, I'm a candidate for District Two, Garrison Higgins, County Commission seat. I appreciate all your support, if I can get it for August second. I'm also here to ask individually if you'd be willing to endorse my candidacy for this board. Let me know, one-on-one, you don't have to make a public announcement or anything like that, but I'd appreciate your support and your endorsement. I've got two or three just quick comments. I will start with the OrV trails. I live next to a two-hundred acre. DNR property that's completely surrounded by residential areas in Garrish Township. I've lived there for twenty-two years. I'm not an OrVer. My whole neighborhood is. The entrance to that comes right off the corner of my property. I've maintained that entrance for twenty-two years, not for myself, but for other people. I walked those trails. I walked with my kids and my dogs. The OrVer's never bothered me out there. A clear cut or select cut, I think it's a combination of selecting clear cut two-hundred acres. To my complete surprise. Couple of years ago. They created new entrances into those acreages without the trees there anymore. They chased off most of the wildlife, and that's starting to come back at least. But then they popped up with the no, but motorized vehicles signs, the little red tag signs that said you couldn't use those trails anymore. I don't know how many years those trails were used by the youth and people in the neighborhoods surrounding those trails, but I'll guarantee it was from inception. And when those houses were built. Those people can run out to trails, but so can walkers. I paved. I don't know how many, twenty-six miles around Higgins Lake with paved shoulders. With, with the help of the Rotary and the Road Commission Funds. And widened out those paved shoulders on every primary road around Higgins Lake, so that there would be a walking and bicycle area. A safe place for those activities on the primary road system in this county. And we're probably the star of the north. As far as people that know that, when they come north. That they can come to this community, and it's almost done in Holton Lake, it's almost done in St. Helen, and I hope that someday before I'm gone. That all those systems are tied together. So that you can come up here and run triathlons and swim to the island and back and. Ride your bicycle for a hundred and some miles around the three or four lakes in this county. And I think we can live together. I've been on my Facebook site saying that. There's gotta be some way to share in those areas that are a combination of residential. And wooded areas. There's gotta be some combination of those where we can live together on those trails. Those trails have been existing for a very long time, and they've been multi-use trails. Forever. It upset me a lot when I saw the red tag next to my house that said you can't take, and I, I don't use them. Set me as a taxpayer, that I was adjacent to one of those trails, and now my neighbors were not gonna be able to use it. The way they've used it for, in my sight for twenty-two years, and like I say, they've never bothered me. I'm right on top of that trail entrance. And they have never abused it. They've never made it inconvenient for me to enjoy my property. And the DNR did more than they ever will think about doing to. Back to my quiet enjoyment of my property when they clear cut two-hundred acres. My eyes aren't what they used to be. You talked about lame duck. I hope you're not gonna do that. If I'm lucky enough to be on this board, I don't wanna deal with what you do on the way out. So, it then, take that in mind. I appreciate if you don't do anything drastic before I have a chance to be here, hopefully. The Community Health Department, I don't think you should ever let. One or two members of any organization that you belong to, run roughshod over you. If there are choices to pull out, then let them pull out and let them deal with it, and then you pick up the pieces of what's left. And you move forward, you serve the people you're here to serve. But to be held hostage by any group. I lived through those days at road commissions where certain road commissioners wanted to pull out. Of the organizations and it causes mayhem, it causes financial problems. But in the long term, you're better off without them. Just my opinion. If they don't wanna be part of your group, then say goodbye to them. Take your hands and say thank you very much. This is what you owe me. So, and then the last thing, I'll give you one promise, I will never sue the county that I'm proud to live in. That's all I've got.
Any other visitors want to be recognized at this time? Okay, item ten, unfinished or new business, early incentive, early retirement incentive program. Jody's gonna bring some information forward on that, I guess.
Yeah, this is actually something that. Came forth from employees. I'm not sure if you're aware, I'm pretty sure you are, and. I think the general public knows, especially those still in the workforce, but the last two years have been. Really hard on our government employees, public safety employees. And I'm not just talking about COVID. So it was brought to my attention that. There may be the option for employees to purchase years. We have allowed it only if they buy that of their own accord. The ability to purchase years of service to retire early is costly. Prior to, the county used to match that with the amount of unfunded liability. That is out there in the MERS program, we would not match, that would not be something I would encourage. Because I have just one employee who needs to purchase two years of service. To where he could start retiring at age fifty. And that cost is about forty thousand dollars. But in investigating, okay. What would an early retirement incentive program look like? Is there a cost savings to the county? How much would it cost us upfront? I have found that if we use criteria that said. An employee that is currently eligible to retire early, i.e. age fifty. Or fifty-five with the correct number of years of service, but is currently employed. And has for whatever reason chosen not to retire. Or an employee who otherwise could potentially qualify for. Age and years of service, but would only need to purchase years of service. There is a, there is a cost savings to doing an early retirement. We have a total of fourteen employees that would actually qualify. Historical lessons is, it used to be. Twenty years ago, that every employee that worked for Roscommon County had a true pension, a defined benefit pension plan. Obviously, in two thousand and eight, those. General and friend of the court unions were closed, and all new hires were put into defined contributions. Unfortunately, or fortunately, we do have very low attrition rates for employees. Though we have held on to defined benefit contributions for closed unions. The unions themselves, both do still have defined benefits. However, we did have the caveat in two thousand seventeen where the planned structure for defined benefit changed. Reducing the unfunded liability for the county for all new hires. That are within the sheriffs and command unit. Union groups. Well, that's a benefit. Those ones are actually open defined benefit plans. And they are funded currently at a hundred and seven percent and a hundred and fourteen percent. Those are our new ones that all new hires go into. The closed ones, we have this historical legacy costs that are associated. They're still in those plans. People have not transitioned. How do we save money? How do we? Take a cost of potentially, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If we offered fifteen thousand for early purchase of years of service. And ten, if you're eligible to retire and just retire. How do you take a hundred and fifty and say that you're going to actually save money? It is a mixture of short-term costs and it's a mixture of long-term costs. Your short-term costs coming from the fact that if. I was an employee who is eligible to retire. As I continue to work, every year I earn more money. In theory, MERS says. When I look at you and I make these vast assumptions under that really cool report that we talk about every year, that we pray the unfunded liability goes up. I'm assuming that you will live to eighty-two. I am assuming that you will work until your normal retirement age. And I am assuming that you will receive an increase of two to five percent. Over the course of these periods. So you have. By taking something and putting into early retirement, you are tapping those assumptions. Those assumptions are frozen. Those people that choose that option, we are no longer unfunded liability for them or guessing. It's a known factor. So that's a reduction. I am waiting, MERS is not real fast on the actual cost associated with that, because that's a, a big point of whether or not we'll save money. Our short-term cost savings come in the form of twofold. Anyone who retires or chooses to leave employment by buying years of service. And opting to retire early or eventually retire at age fifty, because they've bought the correct number of years of service. They are in the closed defined benefits. New employees on non-union side would be replaced with defined contribution. They're also going to start at a lower level of pay. So there's your short-term surveys. Both your short terms in pay and an additional long term, and they're going into the defined contributions at this point. On our union side, they will go, again, you're going to see some attrition. As far as there will be some promotions, because a lot of your people that are in that position are in more senior positions, sergeant position, lieutenant positions. Or at the high end of the scale. So you'll see that attrition move forward. As those employees move to the new command unit that might currently be in the closed, you know, AM sheriff. They'll go into a new ten percent contribution, ten-year vesting versus the old. Cost savings. You also will be hiring new deputies to replace that from the promotions. Lower costs now in the defined benefit of the new. I'm going to tell you that as soon as I get these MERS figures, I would like to bring this to you. I anticipate to be requesting to be on the work session. At the next August meeting to present this. There will be a. Fine crunch to this, which is why I wanna make sure I give you black and white numbers. Look at and make a decision based off of. Sheriff was not able to be here. He does have a. Conference training that he is attending, and so it's important to me to have him here as well, because he, he has been working on this. And he can speak a little bit more from his angle of public safety, and undersheriff would agree as well. The statistical liability for. Law enforcement and public safety personnel, fire EMS. As you head into your years of service, and I don't mean, and you could be eighteen when you start. And in twenty years, you're only thirty-eight, but the longer you work. The longer and larger your chances of actually PTSD. And on-the-job injuries and decision-making capabilities due to mental stress that you've endured for twenty years. Is capable, and this is, this is everybody. I don't know how many years you could serve as a corrections officer and on a monthly basis stop somebody from hanging themselves. Before that starts to weigh on you on a regular basis. So I will let him speak to that, but I, I really wanted to give you the outline of where we were going with this. To pre-warn you that once I present these numbers, the clock starts to roll for MERS. My idea is that we would immediately upon approval. The Board of Commissioners would approve, and we would immediately give a sixty-day window for consideration for those that are eligible. I've got the draft, I just don't have the figures to put into it yet, until after it's presented to you of what that would look like. They would need to leave employment and or retire by March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. So we could see that instant cost savings in next year's budget as well. Sign off on an agreement basically of understanding, but I think sixty days would give them enough time to contact an attorney or an investment broker. To see whether or not this is feasible for them, work anything through with MERS. Or potential for, you know, finding money to buy out years of service if necessary, or make plans for health insurance. So that's where I'm at with that.
Any commissioners have anything in regards to that? I think we should, we need to get it quantified, which you're, which you're, which you're already working on, and you know, and I do, I do know. Where it mirrors mercy on that, so hopefully we'll get that information, so we can put that together for the first meeting, correct? Okay, under, okay, unfinished or new business. There's a couple items I brought forward to you guys. I need to have some help with as chairman. One is regards to. Jim Holland. Director of Legislative Affairs, Grassroots Midwest, Lansing, Michigan. Regards to the F thirty-five. Plane, I guess. And it's, and he's looking for a, a draft letter, I mean, he, he. Give us a copy of it right here, but in regards to, there's something to be sent to Congressman Mullinar, so that's at the federal level. I have not been able to find out if any other counties have been contacted by this. Commissioner Milburn, I do know that you're pretty tight with. With Mr. Mullinar, could you reach out to his office and find out if this is legit or not, or, or, because he's contacted us. When I say contacted, he's contacted Julie twice now. In regards to this and where we stand on this, and I really can't give him an answer. I'd like to find out whether it's.
I'll send it before I leave today.
All right, you can find out. I don't know anything about that. That's at the federal level. Then we also got the email from a gentleman. And he's in Holton Lake, I don't know whose area this is. Ninety-three twenty-six Elizabeth Road. Okay, anyway, he's got a quite a lengthy letter in regards to the Camp Grayling expansion. Okay, I got a copy of that. I haven't had any contact myself with anybody from the, the DNR. Or Camp Grayling. All I've read is what everybody has read in the newspaper. And I thought it was out there. I did have, I did have somebody contact me and say, well, you know, where did this come from? I thought, well, but. I do know it takes in part of Roscommon County, which is the Dead Stream. I think it's a hundred and sixty thousand acres they're looking at. And I don't know what, what do you guys, any suggestions on what to do with this?
Do we actually see a map of the area that they're. Looking at? A lot of that might be Missaki County. Cause your line is right there.
Right, so I, from my understanding, what I've read in the local papers, what I say local, even in the prepress. Is that it just touches Roscommon County. And, and when they said the Dead Stream Swamp, I thought, well, that's. Nothing's inhabited out there other than wildlife, right?
Yeah.
And water. Right, so I haven't, I, I do know there was a public meeting held up in Crawford County because it's a hot topic up there, and I think there's a number of people that have come out in opposition to this. I don't know the pros. I don't know the cons. I guess we'll just see if it takes.
Yeah, because all the oil fields.
I think it's in the early stages. I don't think there's anything. I, I would hope that we would be contacted either by the state of Michigan through the camp, through Camp Grayling. Right, so, okay, just wanted that out there. And then just under, I don't know if this is the proper place to put, but Jody put together Roscommon County General Operating Millage Restoration that, that we've got on the ballot. There's just some, there's, here's some whys, why we need it, what we do, what that millage supports, what our general fund supports, just general information. Did everybody get a copy of that?
Yeah, Jody, I did receive.
Okay, any other unfinished new business from anybody? Okay, item number eleven. Amy, we finally got back to you. Motion number one, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Move to approve and adopt the Roscommon County Fiscal Year twenty twenty-one Annual Fiscal Audit as presented by James Anderson, P.C.
So moved.
I'll second that. Motion was made by Commissioner Russo, seconded by Commissioner Snyder to approve and adopt the Roscommon County Fiscal Year twenty twenty-one Annual Fiscal Audit. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time?
I would like to say that we have a good auditor. He's really good by talking to us and he just does an awesome job.
I think it's important for us to note for the record that we're at seventeen percent.
Yeah.
That's, that's a big deal. And, and, well, we said, you know, the, the quality of the department heads and the employees had made that happen. So the kudos at the end of the day go out to them. But again, seventeen percent is a big deal. Thank you, Jody, and entire staff that work here at the building.
Yes.
And I, I'd agree with Mr. Milburn, and I did talk about this last meeting because it wouldn't be because of Jody and it wouldn't be for the employees that we can get to this point. Seventeen percent, it isn't a fun, our board goal is fifty percent. So actually, we're perfect at seventeen percent. As far as I'm concerned, it was, as long as I've been involved with these audits, it's probably one of the best audit reports we've had in a long time, so. Okay, any other further comments? Roll call.
Snyder.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
McInthaller.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Melvin.
Yes.
Ash Kari.
Motion number two, please.
Move to adopt Resolution number two zero two two point zero seven point zero three Law Library Fund Deficient Elimination Plan Resolution. Whereas Roscommon County's Law Library Fund has a three thousand two hundred and thirteen dollar deficient fund balance on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. And whereas Act two seventy-five of the Public Acts of nineteen eighty requires the below deficient elimination plan to be formulated by the local unit of government and filed with the Michigan Department of Treasury. Now, therefore, it is resolved that the Roscommon County's legislative body adopts the Roscommon County Law Library Fund Deficient Elimination Plan as presented to the Board of Commissioners. Be it further resolved that the Roscommon County Administrator Controller be authorized to submit the deficient elimination plan to the Michigan Department of Treasury for certification.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Milburn, seconded by Commissioner McInthaller. Adopt Resolution twenty twenty-two point zero seven point three Law Library Fund Deficit Elimination Plan Resolution.
Could I make a note, Mr. Chairman, for the record, oh, sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yep, go ahead.
With your permission, Mr. Chair, so I think it's important to know for the record that the, the dynamics, actually, the verbiage is, is on the paper. That will be accessible to the county website and also to our office if they want to contact the two seven five eight zero two one, if anybody needs to see the exact, exact numbers. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any further comments from any commissioner at this time? Hearing our scene, then roll call.
Milburn.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Melvin.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
McInthaller.
Yes.
Ash Kari.
Motion three, please.
Move to adopt Resolution number two zero two two point zero seven point zero four Childcare Fund Deficient Elimination Plan Resolution. Whereas Roscommon County's Childcare Fund has a fourteen thousand four hundred and forty dollar deficient fund plan balance on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. And whereas Act two seventy-five of Public Acts of nineteen eighty requires that the below deficient elimination plan be formulated in the local unit of government and filled, filed with the Michigan Department of Treasury. Whereas Act two seventy-five of the Public Acts of nineteen eighty requires the below deficient elimination plan be formulated by the local government and filled with the Michigan Department of Treasury. Now, therefore, it is resolved that Roscommon County's legislative body adopts the Roscommon County Childcare Fund Deficient Elimination Plan as presented to the Board of Commissioners. Be it further resolved that the Roscommon County Administrator Controller be authorized to submit the deficient elimination plan to the Michigan Department of Treasury for certification.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion is made by Commissioner McInthaller, seconded by Commissioner Russo to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-two point zero seven point zero four Childcare Fund Reduction Deficit Elimination Plan Resolution to the Treasury Department. Any further comments from any commissioner at this time? Both those commissioned, both of these resolutions are required by law to be reported to the Treasury Department. And as Mr. Anderson had said, these are both minor things. We did have a very clean audit, so everything is in good shape, so. Any other further comments from any commissioner? Roll call.
McInthaller.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Melvin.
Thank you, Amy. Item number twelve, committee reports, please.
I can start. Couple Holden Lake Improvement Board and then a agenda meeting. And claims and accounts, so that's it.
Who's next? Anybody next?
Yeah, I believe Claims and Accounts was the time before, but
Yeah.
All I had was Collaborative Board.
Okay, right. Enter Mark, which one of you?
We, we've actually been really, really busy, but it's, you know, historical society stuff coming up, Bud Bash is coming up. We had the fair last night. We've actually been really busy over Holden Lake with a lot of stuff, but I think the only thing that we actually did in regard was NMCA. The donuts were good, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
You, you made up for a donut?
Three donuts total.
Oh.
My son had one.
Ken got one, didn't he?
I don't think Ken. Just so you know, I don't know if this is the right spot to do, but I, but I am planning to put up Mr. Robert Schneider as Person of the Year for twenty twenty-two. Kind of an early, early opportunity to be able to say that's my person that I'm picking. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Ken.
I was traveling around with UP for two weeks, but I did run across an old township trustee from Lion Township. I don't know. Somebody goes back far enough to remember Bill William Ehan. I visited him and presented, he was along, he's a veteran of Roscommon County, a longtime resident. I gave him one of the challenge coins from the Veterans Office for last year. I went to where the little apartment was that he was living in, and he wasn't there anymore, so I had to do some detective work and track him down in a nursing home about thirty miles out of Escanaba, and I paid him a visit. He remembers Higgins Lake, Roscommon, a few other people. He mentioned Coning, Bauer, and Nellis. He knows what's going on with the sewer thing, and so his mind is sharp, his body's giving out, so he's in a nursing home. I presented him with a challenge coin for twenty twenty-two, and he was thrilled about that.
All right, as far as myself, I've been in the union negotiations, had our second meeting with the union negotiations for Central Michigan District Health Department. We did end up hammering out a contract, which will be presented at the next board meeting, which is in August for them. Been working with the Charlton Heston Academy in regards to a childcare building. Been meeting with some, had a meeting with a couple of candidates that come down, and we showed them through the facility down there, been in contact with a couple of other offices down there. We're in hopes to get some money for that. On the eighteenth, Mr. Milburn didn't allude to this, but we had the Northern Michigan County Commissioners meeting here in Roscommon at nine forty-five, which was well at ten.
C.A.
Okay, all right. That's where he had the donuts, okay. All right, I thought it was at the veterans, okay. All right. And on the twenty-first, had the agenda. Like I say, on the fourteenth, I had the first union negotiation, and we finalized it on the twenty-first, so we had the union negotiations done there. So that's what I've been up to. Okay. At this time, item thirteen, public comment, please. Yes, sir. Want to identify yourself? Turn the, turn the green button on if you'd like there, please. All right. Yep, you can have the big chair or the little chair.
All right, great. I'm Rod McLean from Lake Township over at, on East Holden Lake Drive. Every concern, and several residents have the same about the, it's already mentioned, the lake level at Holden Lake. And the concern is we have the milfoil, and we treat the milfoil, and we are, have an assessment to make that happen. And the concern is when we, last meeting, we had the firm that handles the treating of the lake said that they couldn't take a, a sampling because the water was too cold because the lake level was too high at the time after the spring thaw and a lot of water pouring in. So then I then asked the doctor, the biologist, I said, well, you couldn't take the sampling because the lake was too cold. She goes, yeah, the plants won't grow when the lakes cold and the water level's too high, it, it prohibits the, the plant growth. Basic biology. I said, well, can we do this all the time, keep the lake level higher to where it, it at least slows down plant growth, which means that we put less chemicals in the lake to treat them, and we spend less money to do the same. And we also have several residents that are very sensitive to the treatment. And basically, from what I understand, they have to leave the area when the lake's being treated. And that would help with that. Now, I'm not saying it's a one hundred percent solution for the problem with the lake, with the milfoil, the invasive species. But even if it was five or ten percent, it'd be a huge help. And I just want to make sure that, I know Dave Russo is well aware of it, and we're all aware of it. It is a big concern of a lot of residents. And we'd like to keep the lake level a little higher. I realize in the spring, it's way too high, and we need to get the water out because we have flooding on the west shore of Holden Lake. But after we get that water level down some, usually that's, problem's gone. Now we're to the point to where it's so low that the plant growth is taking off, especially with the, the high temps. So I just wanted to voice that concern, make sure that, that you're all aware of it. And anything you might think of that could help with that would greatly be appreciated. And it costs nothing, so.
And as of today, I'm a little over an inch over summer level, and look how low the lake is.
Yeah, and I don't know, I know they came up with that in nineteen eighty-two.
Yes.
It was long before milfoil, and we had this concern. But if, I don't know if there could be an emergency, I know we're waiting for the court to reset this. But anything we could do as far as an emergency to help with that? Because I don't think it really hinders anybody to keep the lake level up three or four inches, and I think it'd be a huge help.
The only thing it hinders is we have that lawsuit from Holden Lake, and the Court of Appeal said we cannot deviate. But technically, we're illegal right now. We just don't have anywhere for the water to go in Holden Lake. So that's the problem is we act illegally now according to the Court of Appeal, so we're hoping that Supreme Court comes through and and then we can help out a little more with you, sorry.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome. Interestingly enough, I alluded to my daughter in St. Louis, Missouri, but I don't know if anybody's seen what they got in the last couple of days.
Yeah.
Nine inches. No, almost nine inches in St. Louis.
And I, I'd love to have some of that in our lakes right now, so. I know that's, that's Mother Nature, so I'm, you know, I'm not going to go there, so. All right, any other public comment at this time? Can I get her, buddy Andy? Oh, yes.
All right, I'm going really fast. So I was going to do some of my report, but this is one of those Jody things that I like to do too sometimes.
Oh, I know what you're going to talk about. Good.
Do you know what I'm going to talk about?
So go ahead.
No.
No? Okay, go ahead.
From yesterday.
All right.
A gentleman called from Lion Township, and he has a beautiful tree on his property. And he wondered if it would be something that we would be interested in utilizing for like an annual Roscommon County tree decorating thing. So Julie, myself, and Noel thought one step further and thought, what if we talked to our Veterans Director and we started holding an annual Veterans Memorial Christmas Tree Decoration? I have no idea what this is going to look like. It's a big tree, got to talk to somebody. He's totally on board, was going to reach out to his board as well, but I just wanted to let you know that I'm working on a crazy idea.
Good. And I don't know if anybody knew about it, Bill's back there. I did meet with Bill yesterday, and he was telling me about the hot dog and hot dog and what was it? Hot dog and root beer floats that was going to be delivered to the, did you get in on that too? Oh, man.
But I, I brought my boy, we scarfed up.
Anyway, Bill, did you get an extra hot dog? That was mine. Did you get it? Good, good. All right. Okay, all right. Item fourteen.
Mr. Chair.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you, everyone.